States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, at this time, we'll ask members of the public who want to come up and speak to us on matters within our jurisdiction that...
Chair Wheeler, we would need to call the roll.
Oh, call roll, thank you. Oh, my goodness, we need to do that, thank you.
Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Vice Chair Minioni.
Here.
And Chair Wheeler.
Yes.
Four commissioners present.
Thank you very much. Now, we can move on. So, any member of the public who wishes to come forward and speak to us on a matter of within our jurisdiction may do so at this time pursuant to the Brown Act. We cannot take action. Anybody who wishes to speak, please come forward. If you have documents, we'll take a look at them. And this is for matters not the subject, not the item that's actually on the agenda. I could feel that intent. So, city clerk, do we have any email comments?
Yes, Chair, we have two email comments, five total supplemental communications.
Okay, thank you. So, seeing no one that doesn't want to talk about the subject matter tonight, I'll take a motion to approve any of the agenda or any changes or rearranging that we wish to do at this time.
I'll second.
Thank you. City clerk, may we have a vote?
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Minioni, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolte, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Chair Wheeler, how do you vote?
Yes.
That motion passes, four votes to zero.
Thank you very much. Now, we have, do we have the minutes from the last special meeting? Then, I will ask for a motion on the minutes of the special meeting.
What?
The special meeting? Do we have the minutes of the special meeting?
Yeah.
Yes. I'll move to the first minute.
I'll second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Any comments? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Minioni, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolte, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Chair Wheeler, how do you vote?
I will abstain as I was not here. Thank you very much.
Motion passes, three votes to zero, two want to abstain.
Thank you. In the absence of continued items, scheduled matters, or new business, we will move right on to our public hearing, where we will be considering the environmental impact report on the sixth cycle housing element, the amendments to the zoning code and the zoning map, amendments to the Main Street specific plan, and citywide. The applicant at this time is the city. We will have presentation from some of our consultants and from staff. So, with that, I will ask staff to get us started.
Thank you, Chair Wheeler. Good evening, commissioners. I want to welcome everyone who came out tonight and say thank you for coming. We have, we're presenting tonight the Housing Element and Rezoning Program. As the chair mentioned, we have two sets of consultants with us tonight. One's at StanTech, who helped us put together the environmental impact report, and then we have the Lisa Wise group, who helped us put together the rezoning program. And we're going to have them speak, each of them speak on their respective topics. Before we got into that, I want, next slide, please. Just wanted to kind of touch up on where we are. This has been a long process. We're about four and a half years into the making. We're in the state's sixth housing element cycle, which is an eight-year period for us to be within this housing element. We're about four and a half years into it, and we're still trying to get our housing element adopted. It's been quite an effort. Up on the slide, I have several dates listed. I won't go through all of them. I just want to take an opportunity to mention that we do maintain a website for the housing element update, because I want to encourage the public to go find this website, because we keep all these resources. This hearing package tonight is quite a stack. To just go through that as paper is very difficult, so we wanted to maintain a place for the public to find these resources in an easy manner. And in addition to having those resources, all these hearings, we have links to the meetings, just so that people could see the history of what we've gone through to get to this moment. And so, with that, I want to turn this over to StanTech to go through their part.
Okay, thank you, Sean. So, good evening, commissioners, and good evening, members of the public. My name is Anna Radnich. I'm with StanTech, and this is my colleague, Trevor Masensky. We helped prepare the EIR for the project, so the environmental impact report. So, it's for both the housing element and the zoning code update. Lisa Wise Consulting will be speaking to the specifics of the actual update itself for the zoning code. And then, we're going to kind of be talking about the overall high levels for the environmental impact report. So, given how long it is and how many pages it is, we're going to try to focus on the assumptions that went into the environmental review. So, feel free to ask any questions if there's something that you feel maybe we missed. So, next slide. So, what is a housing element? Kind of as Sean had explained, it's part of the city's general plan. It's a requirement by state law, and it gets updated every eight years. Next slide. This is a little more same thing. It's a requirement, again, for state funding. It's important that you have a certified housing element. It also helps address housing shortages, affordability issues, and if you aren't in compliance, it can actually lead to loss of local control. Next slide. What is RENA? RENA is the Regional Housing Need Allocation. So, the Southern California Association of Governments is assigned a level of number of units that each city, that needs to be spread across the cities. So, Seal Beach, this round received 1,243 units that need to be associated with zoning to allow for residential. Next slide. This is just a little snippet of the history for RENA for Seal Beach. You can see, in the fourth cycle, Seal Beach was assigned 57 units. Last cycle, which was 2014 to 2021, was two units. And this cycle that goes through 2029 is 1,243 units.
Continue, please.
Within RENA allocation, there's also four different income levels that are associated. So, here's the breakdown to get to the 1,243. Next slide. So, what is included specifically in the Seal Beach housing element? It's an update to the housing goals, policies, and programs, some of the things that Lisa Wise Consulting will speak to. There are eight housing opportunity sites that have been identified. This was a process that the city, that community, city council chimed in on. Some of the links that Sean has provided in his slide can take you to that process. Six of the eight sites would require rezoning, and there's establishment of a new zoning, which is mixed-use residential high density. And additionally, affirmatively furthering fair housing policies are included in the housing element update. Next slide. This is just a breakdown of the eight different sites. And if you go to the next slide, it shows a figure of the eight. So, the red are the eight housing opportunity sites. The blue in the bottom of the screen is the Main Street program, and the purple in the top right is the Old Ranch Country Club. Next slide. So, I think, turn over to Trevor for what is the EIR.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Trevor Masensky. As Anna introduced me, I was the principal in charge of the preparation of the environmental impact report. So, when you prepare an EIR, it comes with a list of assumptions, and I kind of hit the high level of what those assumptions are. But it includes the site inventory, the housing opportunity sites, the assumed ADUs that would come out of those sites, and the potential pipeline projects that worked with the state to identify, as well as the Main Street program and rezoning. You'll see that in the document, it talks about the proposed project that basically is all encompassing of all these components. Next slide. So, this is how they really break down when it comes to some assumptions. So, as you'll quickly come to discern, that the number that Anna just talked about, which was the approximately 1,200 units, is significantly higher in the EIR build-out assumption. The reason that you do this is to allow the municipality to have flexibility across the sites, because this is just an estimate in time, and you might have a potential site that might not build out as the assumption is anticipated, and you want to have the flexibility to try to meet your goal through reallocating those units to other sites that you've contemplated within your housing element. And that has a lot to do with state laws, like no net loss and et cetera. Next slide. So, the purpose of the environmental review is to inform, engage, and disclose information to the public. This is an informational process. That's why we wrote a, I think there was a total of almost 1,800 pages in this evening's staff report.
Five and a half inches without Mike.
That's right, that's right. Is to make sure that people understand the level of discussion and deliberation that's gone into making this evening's decision, to engage the public, to make sure that they are aware of what's taking place, and to disclose any potential impacts that could arise. And if there are impacts, how we avoid them and reduce them through the use of mitigation or alternatives. Next slide. This is a very simple three-step process for what Sean had outlined to be not a very simple process overall. We are at the final EIR stage. We've already released the document. There's already been a public review. We've already had a number of community meetings, but we are here this evening for a certification hearing and approval, which is, and there'll be another one on the 27th. Next slide. The type of environmental review in which you have in front of you is not like a project-level document. There is actually both project and program level assumptions that go into it. So, for example, just by comparison, you may be familiar with an EIR which addresses like direct physical impacts that could result from construction activity of building like a residential subdivision, for example. Some of those resource evaluations are included within this document. Because it's unknown of how these sites will ultimately build out, there's programmatic assumptions which have longer-term mitigation measures that would be implemented. Why is it an appropriate level? Because I had just mentioned, we don't really know how all these eight sites are ultimately going to be developed over time, but the city's process and how it will utilize this document basically is the first step for subsequent environmental review on those eight sites. Next slide. This is the real quick snapshot of the differences between the two. Think of project EIRs as being very site-specific and detailed, so all the resource considerations, everything from site-specific noise to wetlands to all the 22 resource categories that were required to look at through state law are evaluated. They're substantially stronger just because of the amount of detail that's in them, and they're better for discretionary approvals. Programmatic are more high-level in nature. If you could think about the potential impacts of urbanizing an area rather than developing a particular site, that's the distinction between them. Next slide. So, you know, it didn't actually show up too well here, but this is, these are all the requisite topics which we evaluated in the EIR. Those that have a bit of an italic slant to them are those which were scoped out as part of the notice of preparation process. The statute allows us to do that, to try to streamline and make our five inches a little bit shorter. We actually cut out a few chapters. But this is the comprehensive list of all the resources which were considered in the environmental review. Okay, so I'm a big fan of, if you can't put it all on one slide, then you don't really understand it. So, this is your one slide. So, this is your cheat sheet. Of all the resources that were on the previous page, these are the ones that would result in significant unavoidable impacts, those which would require mitigation, and those which were determined to have no impact or less than significant impact. Remember the ones here that are significant unavoidable, because I'll cover them shortly. Next slide. In addition to the direct and indirect impacts that would result from the proposed project being the housing element, you have to do something called a cumulative analysis, and that's particularly important to the city, because you're surrounded by other municipalities that are also doing things. And we need to account for both the indirect, the direct and indirect impacts that could result from the city's action, plus other projects that are known, as well as other actions that are taking place within the particular resource buffer or areas of influence. So, for example, like even for air quality, we look at all the projects that are going on in the particular air basin, right? For like land use, it's within the city's municipal bounds, so on and so forth, and we let it out within the document. So, as I had mentioned before in your cheat sheet slide, there's five impacts which were significant unavoidable. There was air quality, greenhouse gas, public services, recreation, and transportation. The reason those are important is because when we have significant unavoidable impacts, we're required to try to mitigate them to the greatest extent feasible. In the event that we still can't solve that problem through mitigation, we're required to derive an alternative to try to address those impacts. Next slide. As a little foreshadowing, here are project alternatives. The alternatives that were considered in the environmental impact report related to the reduction of air quality and greenhouse gases would require a reduction of vehicle miles traveled. The city's not necessarily in a position to do so, because it would require a significantly more robust transportation system. And because the evaluation is based on like, at a land use level, it's kind of got to be existing to try to see that reduction take place, and the city's just not there yet. And also, the dedication of land for parkland would require a higher density and more land. If you aren't aware, the city is currently underparked in the concept of recreational space per populace, per the threshold which is identified within your general plan. So, we, I always say, we kind of walked into that one. That was a challenge before this action was here. Now, we're not significantly exacerbating it, but we also can't really solve it citywide with this decision, right? So, ultimately, the alternative that moved forward was the no-project existing zoning alternative. Next slide. So, there's a unique provision within the Public Resources Code that says, in the event that your no-project alternative is your environmentally superior alternative, you have to kind of disclose particular things and why you're adopting overriding considerations. This is not unusual for higher-level planning documents like this, but that is the case in which we have here, and that there wasn't a feasible alternative besides the no project. So, there is unique discussions in your document that do address that. Next slide. Ta-da. So, I guess with that, the 1,800 pages or whatever in the total amount that's in the environmental review, we're happy to address any particular resource or impact questions that you have. I think we're going to hand it off to Lisa Wise, who is going to try to get into some of the nitty-gritty related to the code modifications.
Thank you. We're going to move the presentations over, okay?
Trevor, thank you, everybody. I'm David Bergman, joined by Monica Sidlick from Lisa Wise Consulting. And we're pleased to be back here with the City of Seal Beach Planning Commission to present both the work that has been done on the housing element and getting the cities to the point where it has a letter of substantial compliance from HCD, and describe some of the process that took us there. And then, to dive in a little bit more specifically about some of the programs, specifically the program for creating a new zone within the city and updating the zoning code to accommodate the city's obligation to accommodate housing under the regional housing needs allocation or RENA obligation. Let's go to the next slide. Again, Sean has been a terrific leader for us in this process, taking over for Alexa, who we began working with, and Sean will take it in for a landing. It's been a long process, as many as you know. And again, I'm David, and this is Monica, and we'll both be giving a presentation today. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the project context, a little bit about what objective design standards are, because it's also required, what the overall project objectives are, talking specifically about the sites and the rezoning that's needed to be accomplished in order to meet the city's obligations to HCD through the, both through the housing element and through its, having the capacity to meet its RENA obligations throughout the planning cycle, the sixth cycle, which, by the way, they're already planning the seventh cycle. So, some communities up in north are already in the process of beginning their seventh cycle housing element. So, we'll be back to see you hopefully again before too long. And we'll look at specific zoning text amendments that we're going to ask the planning commission to consider and make recommendation to the city council for eventual adoption and modification of the city's municipal code. So, talk a little bit about the project's context, because as Sean indicated, it has been a long process. So, the city really engaged, starting in 2021, with another consultant before LWC was on board, and city staff, to, again, square this question of how is the city going to move from just requiring less than a dozen units in the fifth cycle for the housing element to now 10 times that in the current housing element? The city went through a process, and in 2022, adopted a housing element at the deadline for adoption. However, that housing element never received a letter of substantial compliance, AKA certification, from HCD. That's the point at which LWC was brought on board. And some of you may remember, then, in 2023, I came before this body, and we gave a presentation, trying to get public input in discussing some of the critical trade-offs that the state was really pressing Seal Beach on that were going to be problematic. The state had really targeted the Main Street as an area where they wanted to see significant changes in reopening up the Main Street specific plan to radically change the character, the commercial character downtown and the lower-scale commercial area of downtown. The state was also not convinced that it was, would not be necessary to go into the residential neighborhoods and the residential zones in Seal Beach and enforce a significant upzoning. Our work, and what Monica will present, working with the community, was, is actually what I humbly believe, working with staff and the community, was kind of an elegant solution to avoid those two problems, which was to identify some development sites that already the zoning was in place and sufficient. So, part of it is that, and just so that the community understands, you have to demonstrate not only to the state that the sites you have identified have the zoning, legal zoning entitlements, but you also have to demonstrate that it's a realistic development site and has realistic opportunities to redevelop, so realistic capacity. So, it's not even just enough to change the zoning and give it upzoning. You have to build a whole argument using comparables from neighboring communities, market information, track record about permits in your community, to show that these sites are in fact viable, at the, with the standards that we are, have developed for the city's consideration, and that Monica will go into more detail on. So, we went through this process, and in, a year ago, essentially, October of '24, the city received its letter of substantial compliance after a number of reviews by HCD. What a letter of substantial compliance says is that if you adopt this housing element as written with appropriate findings, and because we're sort of late in the process, you make the requisite zoning code amendments to allow for the capacity to meet your RENA obligation, then you will be in compliance with state law. So, that's sort of where we are right now in the process, which is the state has essentially said, we have accepted this housing element critically with a rezoning proposition for several sites, importantly, not opening up your residential neighborhoods to significant change, not opening up the Main Street to significant change. There is a change that is in the zoning code that will require reopening of the Main Street specific plan, but the quantified objective is for two units to be developed in the downtown over the course of the planning cycle. That is a tremendous change in the position that the state had when we were brought on board. So, I can understand that there'll be concern in the community about these rezonings, but understand that, please, that this is a finely balanced solution, and the alternatives would be less palatable based on the community input that we heard through the process. So, I just wanted to provide that context for what we're talking about. Go to the next slide, please. So, I've explained much of this, but that we received in October, you received in October 2024, that letter of substantial compliance that says, if you adopt this housing element as it is written with key findings, and you go ahead and make these zoning changes, you will be compliant with state law. Changes to the housing element will have implications for this letter of substantial compliance. So, that's something to be aware of, and we can discuss. Go to the next slide. I think Monica will be able to take over, because that's really the meat of the issue, which is the creation, this is Housing Element Program 1B, which is to create a mixed commercial residential high-density zone for the City of Seal Beach.
Thanks, David. Great. So, I'll talk a little bit about the zoning amendments that accompany the housing element and the environmental impact report. Okay, so when we talk about the zoning amendments that are required, the bulk of the changes are really related to the implementation of Program 1B. So, that's what I'm going to focus on in these slides, and that is to create a new zone, new to the city. We called it MCRHD. It's a mixed-use zone, a minimum density of 40 dwelling units per acre and a maximum of 46. At least 50% of the floor area must include residential, but it doesn't allow 100% resident, non-residential. And it doesn't, so it's got to be at least half-residential, right? Okay, next slide. So, where is this new zone? You'll recall these sites from Anna's slide. It's a lot of the sites to be rezoned, the bulk of the sites to be rezoned, are to be rezoned to this brand-new zone. 27 acres up at the shops at Rossmore, about 26 acres at Old Town, Old Ranch Town Center, seven acres at Seal Beach Plaza Village, four acres at Accurate Storage, and nine acres at the Seal Beach Center. Okay, next slide. So, what goes into developing a new zone? Generally speaking, uses, we look at what's permitted by right or with conditions or not allowed in the zone. Base zone development standards, which is the basics, right? Density, FAR, height setbacks. And then, some supplemental objective design standards. And we test out all of the, especially the base zone standards. We test them out on typical sites to make sure that these standards support and in fact facilitate this density of residential units, because that is the point of the rezoning, right? And then, as far as all the standards, and especially the design standards go, work with the community and staff and city decision-making bodies to make sure that the standards really reflect the priorities of the community. So, just a bit about objective design standards. These are, these really came out of legislation adopted in 2019, new as of 2020, which it's SB 330, which is the state saying that all residential housing developments, all of these projects must have an option for a ministerial path to approval, which means the standards are measurable, they're verifiable, they're knowable, they do not rely on personal judgment. And in order to develop them, we need to identify what's important to the community when it comes to design of residential and mixed use, and how prescriptive should we be? So, what do we want to regulate and how? And generally speaking, objective design standards, we call them ODS, they've got to do all of the things on this slide. Acknowledge existing patterns, reflect community priorities, anticipate density bonus projects, and be consistent with all, with established policies, established city policies. And the idea is to lead to better outcomes that are predictable, knowing that projects won't go through the discretionary process before the planning commission or design review committee, because the standards are established ahead of time. Okay, so let's move on to the next slide. So, what really are we amending? Where, what are we doing to the code? This is your whole table of contents of the code, and you can see there are a few in orange. These are the sections where we're going in, and in somewhere in your big packet, there's the track... the track changes, right? These parts of the code with additions and edits shown in track changes. So it's clear what's happening. So generally speaking, the bulk of the of the changes are in Part Two, Chapter 11 to 10, which is commercial and mixed use districts, because this is where the new district is going. So all the new development and design standards go there and a few minor edits to make, to ensure consistency across the code. Okay, let's, okay. So starting with the uses, generally speaking, the brand new zone is consistent with two zones that you already have on the books, right? RH 46 and LC RMD. So we didn't start from scratch. We just looked at what's what's already allowed on these pieces of land already, on parcels that have a zoning that's similar to what we anticipate, the new zone to be like. So we looked at those zones and then made sure that the list of uses would be consistent with what the housing element demands, really. So effectively, that means we added a column to the land use table in that chapter. Let's move on to the next slide. So next, we developed the basic development standards, the basics of building envelope and massing and placement. So we took a typical site, it's not any one site, but it's got some adjacency conditions that are that are found in some of the opportunity sites we're looking at. We worked on that with the city staff. And then we started looking, just, we started with this massing and pushing and pulling and rotating and how are we going to fit this density on the site? And so we worked with a few configurations with a goal being, let's develop these standards. What are the setbacks and the height going to be? So each, so the yellow area is, there's a table that corresponds to, it generates square footage, so we know how many units are in this box and what can we do in terms of upper story step backs to start getting it amassing that would fit with the community? So we've got some of the standards listed here and on the next slide, some more development standards. So the last time we presented this to the community was, it was just about exactly two years ago. It was a workshop and we talked about this and we talked a lot about how this is all about trade offs. So if we have smaller setbacks and less modulation of the building massing, you can get the same capacity, the same number of units in fewer stories, but once you push the, require larger setbacks and more building modulation, the building, the massing will rise in stories. And we talked about parking configurations and what that means to the building massing. And so this is, this is where we've landed. Let's move on to the next slide. And then we talked about upper story step backs, what's reasonable and realistic and would not be considered a constraint to achieving this density that's listed in the housing element. So that in the track changes zoning amendments, you'll see these standards where at a certain height, a building is required to step back. And then actually, one thing that came out of that workshop is, okay, if you've got a six story building, we want the top three to be stepped back a whole lot. So we built in, we edited in response to some of that community feedback we heard, testing it out to make sure that that the standards still support the density that we need. Okay, next slide. We looked at required open space, the amount of onsite landscaping. We looked at design of private open space and design of common open space and design of public open space and at what point should we reasonably expect a project to include public open space? And we worked all that out in the in the standards and the in the chapter that's marked up following the development standard, the basic development standards of the zone. And we talked about this with the community, of course, a couple of years ago as well. Let's move on to the next slide. And then, of course, parking configuration and design drives any multifamily development. It's just at the heart of any residential development. So we establish standards for orientation and access and just determining what are the community's priorities and then that drives what these standards are. And you can see the standards themselves in the in the document. So just going on through some of the, some of the design elements that we're regulating in the in the ODS, let's move on to the next slide. We looked at architectural features and allowed projections to find the right balance between flexibility and character in building, building facades and elevations versus protecting the the public realm around a building and the setbacks. Next slide. We introduced standards for building articulation. So I know the text on the drawings here is very small, but generally speaking, we introduced standards to require some modulation of large buildings and standards that would prevent sort of featureless or tacked on roofs. Next slide. We looked at entrance design to make sure that we would, that the buildings would demonstrate a permeable interface, especially where facing the right of way and pedestrians. And then next slide, the standards get a little bit more prescriptive than your current code, but we wanted to make sure that multifamily buildings sort of reach out to the public realm and they feel inviting and create a safe and comfortable pedestrian environment. So these figures in the design standards show essentially a palette of entrance type with types with some key dimensions to make sure that the entrances are recognizable as such and comfortable spaces for residents and for the public realm. Next slide. A few details, we picked out a few details just to make sure that that architectural quality remains high and that the details are demonstrative of the quality that the community is seeking. And for, on the next slide, for exterior space, a few standards to ensure that exterior spaces are usable and comfortable and safe. And then going on to the next slide, this is just a slide that summarizes some of the feedback that we heard from the community when we held the workshop in October of 2023 and sort of what we heard and how that feedback found its way into the draft that's before you tonight. And that's my quick summary of the of the zoning code amendments for the new zone. And I'll turn the presentation back over to Sean. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. I'll just wrap this up by thanking Stan Tech and Lisa Wise Consulting for their work. The city is just, it's faced with very challenging effort. We have RENA number 1243. Our current housing stock is 14,000. That's almost a 10% increase. So just trying to find a way, as David said, it was a goal, to not impact our residential neighborhoods directly and not to significantly alter Main Street. With the Main Street program, what we are looking to allow with the amendment is for residential units not on the ground floor facing Main Street, Ocean, any, and street facing. They could essentially be on the second floor or in the alley. Actually, the characteristic of Main Street already exists like this because throughout the evolution of Main Street, residential has been allowed until, I don't know, maybe about 30, 40 years ago. And so we're just allowing it to be reintroduced, however, not changing any of the design of the, I should say, structural footprints, that we're not allowing buildings to get bigger on Main Street to do this. They're still limited to their two stories. The lot sizes are still 25, 37 and a half, 50 at the most wide. And so that you're not, the amendment wouldn't allow that significant change. And so I just, those have been the efforts. It's been quite challenging and I think the sites really just represent, the rezoned mixed use sites are pretty much all the shopping centers minus a couple of very small ones. That's how they were picked. We basically took every shopping center we had to rezone for mixed use. And so just want to thank everyone for presenting tonight and I'll turn it over to the commission.
Thank you, Sean. Apologize for that little outburst I had there. Okay, so we have, we have a whole bunch of documents and we have very interested commissioners and we have very interested audience. So what we're going to do is simply an expanded version of what we do in any commission meeting, and that is I'll ask for the questions of the commissioners that they have to give to either staff or our consultants. We'll get those questions answered and that discussion going, just the question portion, not the decision making portion. Then I'll invite the audience up to come up and give your questions to us. Now you will be giving your questions to us and if they are to the consultants, we will jot those down so that it doesn't cut into your time and then ask your questions to the consultants, okay? And then, once we do that, we will then bring it back up. We will close the public hearing then and we'll bring it back up to the commission to deliberate. So that's how the process is going to work, okay? Which is as we do every meeting, but sort of on steroids tonight because we have the consultants with us and the great big topic. So with that, questions, Commissioner. Commissioner Campbell, you had questions?
Yes, I did. You mentioned that the city is deficient in park space. Do you have an idea how deficient we are?
Give me a second, we'll actually pull up the page reference for you.
Oh, good.
It is a
Is it in the final or in this one?
Draft.
The draft.
Draft, okay, good.
And really what it does is it documents the city's existing baseline of just being underparked relative to its population size. So it's not deficient in the sense that it, it's not deficient in the sense that the parks are not of good quality or they don't provide recreational amenity, but rather that there is a standard which was identified in your general plan for a certain acreage of people to parks, which are currently not meeting. And we document that in the recreation section of the EIR on, it's
314.
Yeah, Section 3.13 dash
Say that again, 3.?
14. Just one sec.
Yeah, Section 314 Recreation and for the page reference, it's our PDF page 400, which the document page is 3.14-1.
Dash what?
One.
One, okay.
Is where the section starts.
And in what?
In the draft.
It's the draft, but what is it? What am I looking for when I go for the?
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I believe you were asking, how do we know that the city is already deficient in parkland? Is that what you're asking?
No, I want to know how deficient is our city in park. See, I'm well aware that Seal Beach is an old city and as such, so much of it was developed before they had any regard for recreational facilities because we have the ocean. That's the big recreational facility, okay? But when you get away from the hill, basically, and you go up into other areas, recreational facilities are not that existent.
So your, your current, just, I'll give you the numbers that we identified as part of the exercise. There's a total parkland acreage of 81.65 acres, which is a total of 19 parks.
19 parks into how many acres?
81.65.
80 point?
81.65.
81.65 acres.
And as of the population estimate of 2024, of 24,350, the city's current park ratio is 3.35 acres per thousand residents and you're shooting for five acres.
Do they break it down by district?
You know, we didn't in the document as this, but we could do that if you want to get clarity on that number. But it's implication on the housing element is kind of moot relative to the sites.
It's just that, you know, we're coming up with 1,243 homes and we don't have enough parks and that is a concern. One of the concerns that I have is when we started this process, we were doing Zoom meetings and the opportunity to put in our two cents at the very beginning was not there. And I had specific concerns about one particular area and I've been following it along and it's not come out. And I'm discussed it with other people in College Park East and I'm specifically talking about the development, there are two projects on Old Ranch. One of them was a three story senior facility at the end of the runway and that was, of course, turned down by the Orange County Airport Land Use Commission. And that, that project has morphed into a four story residential building. And I, you know, made attempts to see if the other project consists of along Lampson Avenue, a three story senior facility, residence on the top, residential on the top two floors, bottom floor, medical offices. And I know we do have a bit of a buffer and so my suggestion was to get rid of the four story and then take the other one and make all three stories residential. And then we did have enough extra ones to make it come out. And none of that has ever been discussed. And so I, you know, I have very strong concerns about that because if nothing else, I can just picture being on the upper floors of that four story apartment building and watching a plane come down the runway right at you at the last minute, you know, turning to go the other way. It's not a safe place. Caltrans or not, it said no. Airport Land Use Commission said no twice and yet it still stays in. And my attempts to get it out and have the other building all residential and then pull from the buffer, not been met with any success. So I have concerns about that.
And rightfully so. Commissioner Campbell, the one thing that I will say related to kind of that site in those locations, as I had mentioned earlier, the, the level of planning in which we're doing at this stage is try to figure out just with a reasonable set of assumptions, not at the detailed site level of how particular sites would build out, but following the state's guidelines of what can we account for based on certain parameters that the state sets for us. Lisa Wise identified that there was also a very specific site selection and review process that it went through with the state and the assumptions that go into that. You're absolutely correct. If somebody were to propose a development application on that particular location, those considerations should absolutely be brought up at that time. That level of detail now is valid and warranted, but it isn't at the level of like a site.
We're at the end now. This is the frustrating thing. I've been pushing this thing all along and getting nowhere and this is my level of frustration. And because of that, when we vote tonight, I'm going to vote no, because I see that as a danger, an absolute danger.
I'd just like to, I'd just like to jump in and clarify that the project that Commissioner Campbell is referring to is the proposal for a specific plan amendment to the Old Ranch Country Club to allow 116 units, multifamily, the 56 senior, various things with the club that exists. That is, it's an individual project. So as Trevor said, that this is a programmatic EIR that is, that's geared towards the rezones that are being proposed in relation to the housing element in addition to the total number of housing that could eventually be produced within the city of Seal Beach. However, everything related to the development of the Old Ranch Country Club is a project that will be evaluated separately. that will be evaluated separately. It has its own EIR, which still needs to go, finish its draft EIR component, which needs to go through a public review period, that needed, need to have the response to comments, the final EIR. It'll have to come back to Planning Commission on its own to be evaluated for everything that, that you've discussed. And because it is a legislative action, it will have to go to City Council as well. So that, so the development of that project is not being discussed in it. This approving or recommending this, and if City Council so chose to adopt this housing element, it does not approve the Old Ranch Country Club. That will have to happen separately.
I understand that. I'm trying to get out, get it, get it out of zone changes and get it out of here to begin with.
It's not here.
Because it's-
It's not in there.
And that's not going to happen.
It's not in there.
It's not here.
Okay.
This is the zone change map that they showed us.
I know, but they add so many units for Old Ranch, and when you go into it, that's what it is.
So just to clarify, there is a, a point of consideration related to both indirect and cumulative impacts to where Old Ranch Country Club is considered as part of the environmental review, because it is a known action that's quote reasonably foreseeable, in which we have to account for the indirect effects from it. So whether that is utilities and service, or visual, or cumulative in nature-related construction noise or air quality, those impacts, plus our project, which is the housing element, have been evaluated in our cumulative analysis. But by no means does it offer an entitlement action or approval related to that particular application.
No, but it's still-
Can I ask a quick question with that? The number of, of units being discussed at Old Ranch is not included in our RENA number, right?
Yes, it is.
So the, we have to show the state where the potential of housing exists, and we have, we, so we've, there's three sites identified that we're not doing an, an action on. Two of them are just existing sites where, as of today, a proposal could be brought forth, and that can be developed right now, if approved. The Old Ranch Country Club is a site of which, a project's identified which could bring those numbers, and the state allows us to add that to-
The number.
To the number.
That's right.
And just for a point of clarification, there is a distinction and category in which the state evaluates the city's proposed housing sites versus pipeline sites, or sites in which the city is already reviewing an application. So there's very strict rules about how municipalities have to consider those development opportunities or sites that are already kind of in the, the municipality's kind of pipeline, per se.
Yeah, it's a way to, basically for the city of Seal Beach to receive credit for a project that they know is in the pipeline.
Okay, yeah, a lot of information I absorbed the last couple days. But I guess I was trying to say is like, we do have a buffer, so there's more than 1,243 being proposed with the pipeline and these eight sites.
But they're not identified.
What's not identified?
Which is identified.
No, Old Ranch is not one of the-
But it's in here.
I think it's listed as-
That's the Old Ranch Town Center.
Yeah.
When you look-
Commissioners, can I interrupt for a minute?
Please.
Can I interrupt? This is the time just for commissioners to ask questions of staff or the consultants. You'll have time to debate-
Okay.
-at the end, after the public comment. So can I ask that you try to limit to questions to help you make your recommendation?
So Patty, do you have any more questions for this consultant?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I made my statements.
Questions over here.
I'll, I'll hold my questions till after public comment.
Okay, Karen, questions of the consultants?
I just wanted to make sure. So this EIR, and it's, I think I understand it, but I also, kind of for everybody else, this EIR, EIR is for this entire project. As each proposal comes to the city, they will, they will evaluate it separately, and they will determine if it needs a sequel review, right? Except Marina and-
So even, even-
Even those will.
Even those.
Okay, okay.
And so what-
It's, it's not, yeah, it's not-
It's not a blanket approval for environmental review.
Right.
Let's just say hypothetically, okay, you have, the city goes forward and they approve their housing element, and there's a developer that moves forward with one of the sites. That site is still going to have to file an application. Now, its by right use of land use is entitled, but that, they still have to file an application for development. And through that process, if it's determined that there's a potential for an environmental impact, you have to prepare the appropriate type of secret document. And there are multiple paths. It could be exempted with a series of technical studies. You could prepare 15183 consistency determination with this document to say, hey, all the impacts has actually already been studied, and we'll implement those mitigation. If there's something new that comes up that's site-specific, say there's a, a wetland or something that you know is going to result in an impact, which might require an agency permit, you might have to do a subsequent EIR, or a subsequent, or supplemental environmental review document. So it is really all based on the project circumstance, but it is by no means a, a blanket approval of all the, the eight sites-
Okay.
-for subsequent entitlement actions.
Okay. Just for clarification on a couple of things real quickly. The RENA number went up considerably with this. Is that unique to Seal Beach, or is that something-
We all kind of chuckled underneath our breath there. No, it's not unique. The regional housing need allocation, not only related to this MPO, but other POs across the state, the, have gone up significantly related to California's housing crisis. And also, the implementation process for how the state actually reviews sites eligibility has been modified. So this is a new setup rules, is like I'd, I'd like to say, in how you have to plan for and account for housing within your community.
It's a whole new world. Okay, another question that I have for clarification purposes, which, based on the presentation that you gave us. You talk about, we talk about very low and low income. Can you tell us, give us an estimate? These are, these are the numbers. This is based on the percentage of the county income, if I'm not mistaken. That would be the Orange County income. So for instance, you know, what's, what's moderate? Or one of these, any one of these, to, because I think that there's a question what very low income means.
Let me get that exact number for you, because they are published. Give me one second. It's in our document.
Because I think it's helpful when we discuss these things, that when we're saying low-income housing, what that really means in Orange County, California. Okay, while you're working on that, one of, for, one of the things that comes up is ADUs. Now, ADUs do not count toward the RENA, if I'm correct in that?
So, I think you're correct.
I'm sorry, I thought that was a-
Depending upon which category they fall in related to, like, so if they are income or rent restricted, you can get some credit for them.
Okay.
And so it just depend, it depends on the type.
Okay, okay.
So the ADUs in the housing element are based off of a formula that the Southern
California Association of Governments created for communities to account for ADU production-
Okay.
-based on the last four years of production? So you had to demonstrate the historic levels of production? And the distribution by income level was a SCAG study that was accepted by HCD?
Okay, okay. Okay, so those have been considered in the documents that you have put forward and in what we have sent to the state? Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't a-
Yeah, there, there are seven ADUs included in the RENA. So one can reasonably anticipate, given changes in state law, that when it comes time to submit your annual progress report, you will show more.
Okay.
And that will be beneficial to the city.
Got it, okay, good. Thank you. I just didn't want it to get lost and then become another issue. They're still playing with my income number. See if I have anything on the zoning. I just want to make sure that-
I got your income number, if you want to know what they are.
Okay, good, please.
So your above moderate income is 146,500. Your moderate income is 46,500, right on the dot. Low is 110. And it also depends on the household type, you know, one person. That's right.
Okay.
Very low is 69,350. Extremely low is 41,600.
Okay, so, so what my point is here is that these are fairly significant numbers. This isn't what you might think of as, you know, it's going to be low income is very different in other states and in other parts of California.
That's correct, yes.
Than it is in, in Orange County. I would like a, a very brief, I, I think that the language about significant and unavoidable impacts is something that can be of concern. So can you give me a, a little, a little cliff note on that?
Sure, absolutely. So in the statute, it requires us to determine the level of impact past a threshold. Some thresholds are very bright-lined. You deal with air quality emission thresholds, which are established by a regulatory agency like your air district that says, hey, for particulate emissions related to PM10, once you pass X, you have a significant impact. Other resource considerations are somewhat qualitative and then quantitative. Qualitative in the sense of a visual or aesthetics impact is very much dependent upon how the policies are written within that particular municipality's general plan and what established view sheds they might have.
You're a little high-level for me here. I wanted something a little simpler.
Okay. The idea around a significant impact is you first have to have, identify an impact. If you cannot fix that impact through terms of a mitigation or an alternative, it becomes significant and unavoidable. Once it's significant and unavoidable, the lead agency is required to adopt overriding considerations if they cannot fix that problem. So it is a pathway that is identified in our Public Resources Code to acknowledge the fact that you're not going to be able to fix every problem every time, and it allows for you to move forward and certify environmental review when you understand that there's a significant unavoidable impact.
And for a project such as this, where we're looking at citywide impact, that's certainly not unusual. But that comes up even on much, much smaller projects.
Very accurate, yeah.
It isn't just this that's making it-
That's correct.
Because significant and unavoidable sounds like such a big monumental thing that we shouldn't do it, but there's very small projects, especially with regard to air quality, anything, it puts us over the threshold.
Sure, sure. So for example, like your community, if you were to have a project of substantial, like a residential project of substantial size, as we talked about earlier, because there isn't a heavy network of transit, vehicle miles traveled impacts because of your thresholds are going to be very hard to meet, so you're likely going to have significant unavoidable impacts for large, like, say, large residential projects.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, if we don't have any other questions from the commission, I'll ask for the public to please come forward with your questions. What's our time limit?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. And again, I'd like your, your, your comments and questions come to us, and then we will bring them to the consultants, so that, so that there isn't the immediate give and take. Are we, yes? Okay, good, very good. So who, who wants to be first? Come on down, just give us your name, and the consultants will also be taking notes to make sure that we get your questions answered thoroughly.
Hi, Charlie Kluger from College Park East resident. You have to pardon my naive with the process here with the Planning Commission and affordable units. And this might be a question that might be extremely late, but the amount of units that we're required here in Seal Beach, as far as the state's concerned, as far as Wise has developed the 1,243 units, proportionately to other communities and with the availability of property, is that reasonable for a city of our size compared to other cities like Huntington Beach, Long Beach, even Los Alamos? They have a lot of property. Maybe not a population, but they have a lot of property, as opposed to the land available for us to develop. I know a lot of work has been done, but is there a possibility to move forward or to continue with the process with the understanding maybe that commission can direct attorney to go to the state and cause some action with the state and say, hey, listen, something's out of proportion here? Just asking the question, a little common sense. And with that said, again, a little common sense, there's a piece of property, 28 acres coming available, or is available, with the Department of Navy, and I know it's federal land, but one of Wise's slides showed dwelling units, a density of 46 units per acre. If you use that formula, if you took maybe 15 acres or 16 acres of the 28 acres that the Fed, that the Department of Navy has coming available at Seal Beach and PCH, that would cover almost 800 units right there of our requirement. Now, I know it may take a lot of negotiation and a lot of maybe changing of policy within the Department of Navy, but is there a possibility of sitting down with the Department of Navy and working something out as far as the, creating some affordable housing there? And then one other factor that was brought up tonight about parks, has this, the, the park issue been considered with the development in Los Al? Because their EIR, the development of, I think it's called Park Place, when, within the city of, of Los Alamos, they used the Heather Park, which is within the city of Seal Beach, as one of their mainstays as far as that property, Los Al, using our park site. So that's going to burden our parks with that community, even though it's in the city, it's, it's outside of our city limits. So that's going to further burden our park issue. So I think that impacts some of our parks, and that needs to be considered. Again, apologize for bringing up some of these issues. It may be too little, too late, but I think it should be considered because there's some common sense issues here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next?
Good evening, planning commissioners, interim community director and planning staff. My name's Susan Perel, and I live in Bridgeport. During the review process for this EIR, our governor made a rather extraordinary move to exempt most housing development projects from secret review. I just want to bring that out because we've been talking, oh, you're going to get a second bite at the apple. These projects are all going to have to, you know, submit plans and have those reviewed, and we'll go through the secret process, and we'll get an MND, or we'll do an EIR, but maybe not, probably not. So just want to, you know, bring that up. I really, I really do support, despite the governor's decision, AB 31, I really do support staff's decision to continue the secret review anyways, because we were really, most of the way through it, or, you know, good part of the way through it. And as staff stated, we believe, Seal Beach, I think, believes that community input is valuable, even if it's not necessarily required anymore. So I don't want to beat the, the dead sequel horse here. We're pretty far down the line getting this EIR done and getting, getting it certified. So I'm, I'm almost giving in. But what I'd like to do tonight is urge the development staff and the planning commission to realize that value that we said was important to us, to get our community input. We collected that community input, and there was tons of it, and you guys did a pretty good job, but there were kind of some flippant remarks in the EIR about some comments, but, but I think we did a really good job getting that community input. And now, let's use it. If we value it, let's use it. I think we can use it to inform better decision-making down the road, maybe before these projects are built, maybe before these projects submit their plans to the city. And so I think two of these community concerns that came up and- And so I think two of these community concerns that came up in particular deserve our post-EIR consideration. These public comments, these two issues were directed at 99 Marina Drive, but I think that, well, the very same concerns apply to other development sites as well. So the first one, those are public comments regarding flooding and stormwater management. Bridgeport streets that are adjacent to 99 Marina site already suffer from inadequate stormwater management. It floods. And new impervious surfaces created by that new RHD 33 development at 99 Marina are going to add a lot more stormwater. So these concerns weren't specifically addressed or resolved in the EIR, it was a programmatic EIR. And, and so instead, the EIR stipulated these concerns would be addressed down the road under, you know, other permit processes, probably not SEQA, but ministerial perhaps. But that response leaves Bridgeport community with really only a big leap of faith that this additional stormwater is going to be effectively managed, allegedly by future upgrades to the sewer system. I don't know, we already have all these problems. So I'd just like to suggest, let's use the input that we got. There is a better and proven way to resolve this particular problem. Recently, the coastal commission required the new housing development right across the street from 99 Marina, Marina and Forest Streets to manage all their 100-year stormwater on-site. The result is an attractive and obviously very marketable open space area inside the development. It provides wetlands habitat, parkland, which we're also missing, pollution prevention, flood protection, and stormwater management, and it works great and it's lovely. So maybe, I'm asking the planning commission to consider the possibility of requiring large-scale development at Marina Drive or any flood prone, prone area, College Park East, for instance, to provide the same level of efficient and beneficial on-site flood protection and stormwater management. And that might require an update to our code or to our stormwater management best practices, but I believe that those benefits would really outweigh the cost. We can at least try to get there, I think. I'd like to ask you.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
Great. Second issue is RHD 33. We're going to enable a three-story apartment building right next to single-story, single-family RLD 15 homes in Bridgeport. Two stories above existing homes, double a density on adjacent parcels with no gradation or buffer. I asked the planning commission to think about how we could maybe modify our building code to require buffering, landscaping, upper story setbacks, as we talked about tonight already, or spatial orientation.
Your time has expired.
And those are my comments, and I'm glad I got through that, and thank you so much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Teresa Miller, Old Town. Thank you very much, planning commission, first of all, because I know that's a giant duck, and I know that you all wrote it, because you, you have great questions, and thank you both for your presentations. I just have a series of questions. First of all, this was the 21 to 29, I think she said version six or version seven? Okay, version six. We're almost on version seven. We spent a lot of money, I'm just going to remind you, somewhere around a million dollars on putting this together, and we are still not there. And 2029 is knocking at the door. We are almost in 26, that's almost three years. How much of this can be applied? Probably none, because your numbers are based on 2019 and 2020, or 2021, so just keep that in mind as well. So first of all, on the, so what, what are the repercussions that happened to us this year? Was there a loss of grant funding? Was there any legal, you know, challenges? Was there HCD attorney, any kind of formal action that happened? I don't know, probably not. The 1243 SCAG, how was that, how, how did we go from, we've been a city that's had generally consistent populations since 2000, go from, you know, two to 1245, or five houses to 1243? We ever be, I want you guys to explain how that happens. I know it's a political negotiation among the cities. How were we represented? What happened? Who spoke up for us? Why, why is it that we're where we are? The zone changes that, you know, we're talking about have ramifications way down the road, not just for the housing element, but way down the road, because it affects our plan. Would that somehow, you know, make us look at eminent domain down the road? Maybe. You can't promise that that's not going to happen. So I want you to ask those kind of questions. Also, the state had 2 million people, don't forget this, 2 million people leave the state in the last three years. That is documented, that's in the census report. 95% of our state has no, is completely unoccupied. Remember that. So these opportunity sites that we have, there's a lot of questions with those as well. One, the ADUs. Okay, let's go back to the numbers of the very low, low, moderate, and advanced moderate. So part of the whole, from what I understood in reading all of that information, was that we, there are numbers that are associated, 258 very low, 201 low, 230 some moderate. Okay, so if you're talking, that's, that's development, that's developer buildings, I would think, because if you're asking a person to add an ADU, unless you're allowing the state to dictate to you what you can and can't charge, which if that, if that's where we're going, we need to stop it, but how is that even possible? How are they going to maintain that? What, what pricing are we looking at? What's the low end? What, I know you said it was 146 was the, one of the numbers, the number I saw was 157, and then it's based on 50% or 30%, and it's based on how many people are going to live there. Okay, a lot of, lot of, you know, specifics. How is, this is another question, how are we going to handle the builder's remedy? How's that going to apply? That's very important, we need to know that. Can't just say yes to, to all of the asks in any of the documents, because it's, it does have some circumstances coming up. The new zone, the new zone right now is in a, an area that is mainly, you know, like the Ralph Shopping Center and all that. And that contributes to our tax base and our general fund. What happens when that's gone? And if we have a smaller footprint of a store or something, our general fund tax base for our, for our sales tax will evaporate. Then what? What, where are we going? Where are we, are we, we're just going to collapse, because, you know, how are we going to fund our, those kinds of things? What about infrastructure? We have to look at that, where we are, we're tapped out. We're also tapped out in our park and our open space, and, you know, we have to look at all those things, you know.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
The Main Street, I want to know why the state targeted Main Street so heavily, and who, who went to bat for us there? Like, why was that such an issue initially? Because it might come back, and we need to know. And I have more questions, but I'm out of time. And for the record, five minutes is just not enough for anybody to talk about all this, all these issues when you're looking at five inches of paperwork there. So, thank you.
I apologize, my, my printer ran out of blue ink, and everything that I was going to pass out is illegible, so I'm just passing, passing down some drawings, just to remind you kind of where, I'm going to talk a little bit about the airport runway. So I want to thank.
Your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Shelley Sastarsik, College Park East. I want to thank, I watched your, the EQCBs and Sean explaining some things to them. I appreciate the, the attention toward hydrology and stormwater runoff and the idea that each site will have its own study and go into depth. Also, transportation, because circulation is real important. I'm from College Park East, which is up on the north of the freeway, and if, when you look at those diagrams, you'll see that the two shopping centers up there are large, and there's a lot of numbers up there. Cumulative impact didn't seem to really include them because they're not really proposed. I guess it's more like the ones you're expecting that sort of look at the cumulative, but with the maximum buildout, there's like 1,100 units between the two shopping centers and the, the golf course. So there, it's a significant number that's coming in. What I wanted to talk about tonight was, I, I thought that the draft EIR, there was sort of an oversimplification of airport safety considered in the draft EIR. It basically says that development is not in the JFTB, the, the airbase's clear zone, not in 65-decibel noise contours, and under 200 feet tall, so basically, there's no problem. I served on airport, the Orange County Airport Land Use Commission for eight years. I am not an airport, air aviation expert by any means, but I've seen a lot of projects be reviewed, and I'm familiar with some of the California Airport Land Use Handbook things, so give me a little, a little room here. Airport land use commissions were formed to help cities ensure that development around the airports are safe for those who live and work there, and that development does not interfere with the operational integrity of the airport. So we sort of are all in a rush to override their decisions, but they were formed to try to make things work between the airport and development. It was mentioned that some of the sites are in the 60-decibel noise contour, conditionally consistent, and there, there was a comment that it's sort of like being, maybe Sean's on, sort of like being on Main Street, but CNLs are, community noise equivalent levels are averaged over 24 hours, so just because it's, you know, maybe 65 decibels up there doesn't mean that you have some very loud noises that are sort of averaged over 24 hours. So a jet taking off might be 140 decibels, so. California Airport Land Use Handbook also has a lot to say regarding airport safety. The letter that I wrote regarding the draft EIR has two letters attached from the aeronautic division of Caltrans. The first letter written in 2016 was written during an attempt to update the A-Loop in 2016, 17, but little was done to change it at that time because the base lacked funds to do the required studies. Caltrans cited that in the 1994 AQs, which is Airport Installation Community, it's sort of a getting along with the community as you study, which, the, the clear zone was closed onto the base because it had less than 10 jets and 24 propeller-driven airport operations on a runway in average busy day. Caltrans aeronautics letter stated that the JFTB should update their, their A-Loop to...
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
Seriously? Okay. Anyway, what I'm concerned with is that when we're looking at the shopping centers up there, they're both close to the airport, and the, this document says that the, the multifamily housing would be permitted by right and exempt from SEQA review, but I'm concerned that all these changing laws, and we're talking up there about residential towers.
Their time has expired.
That that would be a problem, so.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, thank you, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back up here. So we have quite a few questions that came up. I'm going to try to summarize some.
Can I, can I suggest you leave the public hearing open so you can get the input from staff and from the consultants?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, you spoke too quickly.
Ah, thank you. Then we'll leave the public hearing open, and to ask, let's try to group this, and then please, any other of the commissioners, or if there's other things that the consultants here that they want to answer. I think the first thing we want to talk about is the RENA numbers. Did we fight them? Did we do something about it? Did we argue it? Did we, were we represented? Did we talk to SCAG? All of that. Can you briefly, whether staff or Sean or whoever?
I mean, I'm happy to provide you just an overview in the context of numbers, and maybe Shawnee can give us some insight into kind of the process, how they were kind of given to the city. But for the purposes of the re-allocation for the county, there was a total of 1,341,827 units. I kind of just picked, like, the highest allocation, somewhere in the middle, where the city's at, kind of the lowest, just for a frame. The city of Irvine has to generate 23, 23,610 units.
How many is that again?
23,610.
Okay.
The city of, the city of Costa Mesa, 11,760. Fountain Valley, 4,839. Seal Beach, 1,243. Villa Park, 296. And of the allocation, there is a trend of the more units you got, the higher account for affordable units there are, just because the feasibility of those units becomes more practical, because you're building more units, which can offset the cost of affordable units. So just as a concept, that's how the allocation.
And then Shawnee, could you talk to us a little bit about, did the city question this? Were we represented? Did we talk to the state, to SCAG?
I would have to do research on that. Those numbers were assigned in 2021. The city council adopted the housing element in February 2022, and I, I came on the process in November of 2022. And so as far, my understanding is, is that those, the state assigns the numbers to SCAG, and then SCAG goes through a process in which they assign the numbers to each city, and my understanding is there's no negotiation, you just get your numbers.
But, but there certainly has been a great deal of concern. There was a lot of money spent with, through our, the various agencies, and, I mean, I think that it went on for some time. It, it, it was not as though this city, or for that matter, practically any other city that just said, thank you very much. Okay. So there was, there was concern about that, there was all kinds of consternation, and the numbers have not changed.
Yeah, and I think, you know, Lisa Wyze can also speak to it as well, when they came on board, that the process in which the city has undertaken to even get to this point was a significant lift in effort to even get the state to agree to the sites in which we're ultimately at. And, you know, there's a lot of back and forth with every community that's going through this process, just knowing that how those sites are counted is definitely different in this, this round than it has been in previous rounds.
Can I say, make a comment on that? Welcome.
Seal Beach, population-wise, is not that big a city. Landmass-wise, we're one of the top six cities in the county, because we've got 5,000 acres with the naval weapons station. I dearly hope they didn't use land size of your city in coming up with the number, because we would get screwed. But I understand, Huntington Beach has something like 15,000? So to come up with 1,243 is a lot more palatable.
Well, I think we saw from the, the, the schedule that we, that was shown to us at the beginning, that the amount of back and forth that the city of Seal Beach did with the state, there we go, with regard to attempting to get, to ensure that we gave our opinion to the state, and, and the difficulty of moving forward for us was certainly discussed with the state agency in the back and forth of these documents that finally led to the 2024 letter that, that indicated that we could attempt to move forward.
You know, the only other thing that I had also mentioned that I hadn't heard being said this evening is that this is a, an exercise for the, for the municipality to identify how they can accommodate that growth number. It's not to approve that growth number across the board, right? And actually furthermore, if growth takes place in other parts of the city, you get to take credit for that in meeting your number, right? And so it doesn't need to be, you know, the 1,200-some-odd units in these eight locations, it could actually be spread out across the entire municipality through redevelopment and intensification and other ways.
And actually, I'll take that as an opportunity to answer another question. There was a, Mr. Kluger brought up a question about why don't we identify the naval site? And we actually identified two naval sites originally in which potentially housing could be developed. The state came back and said... back and said, "You have no authority to make that happen, so therefore you cannot count it." However, the Navy is going through a process. They're putting out a RFP for redevelopment of that northeast corner of Seal Beach Boulevard and Pacific Coast Highway. The city is actively speaking with the Navy and being a partner in whatever ways we can. If and when those sites are developed, we get credit. So we don't get the pre-credit, but once the housing is developed, we actually get the credit.
If I can also just put an underline in it. So the housing element consists of a series of programs that the city is committed to following through during the planning period. And one of the programs, one piece specifically addresses coordination with the Navy if there's any surplus land or base housing opportunities. So that's part of the commitment that the city is making with the state to partner with the Navy as part of the housing element.
Please.
The two shopping centers on Seal Beach Boulevard, the former Rossmore Shopping Center, shops at Rossmore across the street, the Target Center, they are a huge part of our arena numbers. And the thing that concerns me, and I brought this up at the last council meeting, is these areas are going to be rezoned within four years. And what concerns me is we've just given the developers, the owners of the centers, an easy way out if those centers fail to pencil out. Because right now, we're looking at Westminster Mall is all but shut down. And we're going to be seeing this, where people are buying online, and the brick-and-mortar stores are going away. And if that happens, we are losing a significant part of our income. Because I think, what I mentioned at the last council meeting was, I think something like 25% of our income comes from sales tax revenue at these shopping centers, and those two are significant because they're much larger than the other shopping centers. And so we have given the developer an easy way out. And that concerns me because, I will tell you this, way back in the early '70s, we had a problem with ERISA, Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund. The state took more of our property tax money to meet certain criteria. And the problem was Seal Beach was a bedroom community. So we lost property tax revenue because the state took more to give the school districts. And what happened is, that's how we ended up with our utility tax, which is 11%. Now it's down to 10%. But that incident generated the utility tax because we just didn't have the revenue. We did not have, the Rossmore Shopping Center was like the Seal Beach Plaza, was nothing a big, not a big deal. A lot of land, but no real revenue. And so this is our concern. Because by putting those two shopping centers into the housing element, we have basically given the owners carte blanche. If their shopping centers fail to give them the revenue that they're looking for, they can just sell it for residential. And we're right back where ERISA really nailed us in the mid-'70s. Because that's where our, that utility tax came from.
Okay. Let me check with, confirm with the consultants who prepared the zoning portion. The rezoning to the MC/RHD, if I'm not mistaken, does nothing to decrease commercial. However, it does add residential. But there's nothing to prevent additional commercial.
That's right. Yeah, it's a mixed-use zone. So the intent is for ground-floor commercial with units above and ample open space and new rights-of-way to enhance connectivity through the site. Yeah.
And am I correct that it would allow for greater density of both retail and commercial, retail and residential on the site? They could add additional?
Yeah. If you're asking, what's the comparison between the allowed FAR of non-residential development compared to existing residential development, I'm certain it wouldn't be a decrease. I don't have those numbers offhand, but we could certainly generate them.
Okay. So, but there is, they have the capacity to add new development to the site without removing any of the retail.
Yes. Yeah. So there are, the sites in question, you know, when we began this, we looked at the surface parking area, we looked at the likelihood that the property owners might, might look at the feasibility of new development on some of that underutilized surface parking areas and how that could be mixed into the site. So there's all kinds of potential configurations and ways that the site can develop out. I mean, I can assure you that the intent is not scrape it all and replace it with all residential. That's not what the rezoning and all the standards are pointing to.
If I can put a little finer point on it, the state requires that each of the sites in the site inventory demonstrate a realistic capacity for reuse or redevelopment during the planning period. They require that you demonstrate this with the track record of other properties in the regional market, among other metrics, as well as the physical fit. All of the analogues that were provided to convince the state that these were realistic sites, were mixed-use sites containing both residential and commercial development. And that is, in fact, is what the market is likely to produce. As the commissioner points out, it is an opportunity for the property owners to intensify development on their land holdings. This will make their commercial development more viable. The other alternative is less, is abandoned and empty retail sites, which is something that's being experienced elsewhere. So if you don't allow commercial sites to redevelop as mixed-use development sites, typically what you see in this market are abandoned retail sites.
Okay. Thank you.
Westminster Mall.
If we can move on, a couple of other terms that were brought up that I want to clarify. The terms of the issue of eminent domain came up, and the issue of building remedy came up. And so what I'd like to put forward as a question is, does anything here, anything that we're doing here with the housing element and the EIR thereon, have any effect on eminent domain or building remedy issues, builder's remedy issues?
I'll speak, and then I'll obviously defer to the city attorney to add any additional color if she'd like. On the issue of eminent domain, no, there's no takings required underneath eminent domain to make any of this happen. This is a planning-level exercise, and so there is no eminent domain action. If there is, there's a very specific process and hearing that needs to take place on future development applications.
It's not affected by...
No, that and this. Builders' remedy. Builders' remedy and the Housing Accountability Act are a pathway in which if you do not have a certified housing element for your municipality, that it opens up a streamlined review and required approval process should your housing element not be certified by the state. It's, last time I checked, and this is where I'll ask for clarification, last time I checked, the city does not currently have any builders' remedy applications.
No. We do not.
And if we get this done, we will be less likely to ever have them.
That is a, that's a true premise. Yeah. But that's not to say that in between now and then.
Right, less likely.
Yeah, that's right.
And getting it done, both are in the future.
Just to add, the fact that this city, as Trevor said, the city adopting this housing element update doesn't involve eminent domain, that is a whole nother issue. Regulatory takings, whatever, has nothing to do with this.
Right. That's what I want to clarify.
The builder's remedy issue is, it's one of the risks or ramifications if the city doesn't have a certified housing element. If the city doesn't have one, the city could be subjected to an application by a developer under the builder's remedy statutes that would essentially take away the city's control. So the risk of not adopting this and getting it certified by the state is, in fact, the potential for a builder's remedy application.
Question.
Would that impact another city coming after us if our housing element is on a Lamson Avenue project? That's in the city of Los Alamos. They're trying to get access to our sewers. Nick said, he did a great six-page letter refuting it, said they don't have post-entitlements. So the status of our housing element should not impact them at all because they don't have any recourse to us if our housing element, I mean, this is where we are. But, and it most likely, you guys will vote for it, and the city council will vote for it. Does the city of Los Alamos have any recourse to us? That's an intrajurisdictional entity or situation.
The builder's remedy issue has nothing to do with Lamson. That's a project in another city that's seeking something from this city. Builder's remedy is if somebody owns a piece of property and the city has no certified housing element, that property owner can come in with an application under the builder's remedy statute and seek approval where the city has no discretion. Has nothing to do with the Lamson project.
Right. So just stick, if we could, stick with this and not other projects.
But I want to know, do they have any recourse to us if our housing element is not...
I'm not going to address Lamson because that's not before the commission.
We've got enough here right before us. Okay. Okay. So two other things that I still had that I felt that might be able to, the issue of stormwater concerns in a certain area of the city, and whether or not we would be able to place appropriate conditions on potential development in that area to ensure that we adequately address stormwater issues. Does anything here affect that?
Beyond here, there are state laws underneath the Port of Colon Act and the Water Code in the state of California, which requires, depending upon what future development were to be proposed, how they would be required to handle it. So for example, if you're a site that's under like a half acre, there's very prescriptive ways in which you have to keep pre- and post-development flow conditions similar so that you're not additively dealing with the problem. If you're over an acre, there's different design requirements. So I hate to give you a wobbly answer, but it depends on what is going to be proposed at the time at that site location. But what the document does do is it identifies a current known environmental condition in which there's a challenge. So it's documented in the record. So if someone were to try to utilize this document to tear off of, they would have to subsequently solve that challenge with their development application.
So we're identifying that concern?
We're identifying it's a challenge.
And it will have to be addressed in the future?
That's correct.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Lastly, the concern with regard to the EIR oversimplifying the airport issue. How did the EIR address the airport issue?
So I'll speak to kind of what the analysis accounts for, and then I'll have Sean add a little bit of color related to the process, which has already taken place, related to the conversation with the Airport Land Use Review Authority. The sites which are currently contemplated underneath the housing element identify the potential for inconsistency with the Airport Land Use Review Commission based upon whatever future design might be proposed. Because there is no future design or any of the modifications which would be inherently inconsistent, it doesn't identify a significant unavoidable impact. And it does identify the required documents for future applications to make sure that they are consistent with. And then I also have Sean identify the process in which the city, I say "we," the city has already undertaken in presenting this to the airport review commission.
Yes, correct. So as part of a process, when you update any part of the general plan, do you need to take it before the Airport Land Use Commission? We did so on August 7, and they found a determination of inconsistency. This is actually pretty common in Orange County. The city of Irvine, the city of Costa Mesa, the city of Santa Ana, the city of Los Alamos, all went through that same determination of inconsistency. Any city that was near an airport received that determination. All those cities went through a process of overriding that consideration. What that entails is that following the determination by ALUC, the city council has to send out an intent to override, essentially sending a message to ALUC and to Caltrans Division of Aeronautics that there will be consideration of overriding the determination. That gives the 45-day review period for ALUC and the Division of Aeronautics to send in a letter for the city council to consider. And then the city council, which if this project moves forward, we're looking at October 27th for a city council to consider the housing element and the rezoning program and the amendments to the zoning code. As part of that, they would need to consider whether or not they wish to override ALUC's determination. That requires a supermajority vote, which means four of the council members need to vote yes in that override.
What if you don't get the override?
So that's an interesting question. So we actually have a case example. The city of Los Alamos, during their process of, once they received the determination of inconsistency, they reported that to, and they had a vote to override the city council that determination. The vote was 3-2, so they did not have the four votes needed. They reported that to HCD. They were unable to override that determination. HCD sent a letter to the city of Los Alamos that because they did not do the override, that essentially any project would have to go before ALUC for discretionary review, which meant that residential projects were not being streamlined, which meant that the housing element was not in compliance with the state. And in their letter, they stated that this would be referred to the Attorney General's office, which could result in fines of $10,000 to $100,000 per month until this is rectified. That would increase threefold after three months and sixfold after six months. And additionally, if in extreme cases, that all land use regulation could be stripped from the city. Los Alamos subsequently went back and voted for one to override, to overrule that determination.
So that will happen subsequent to our meeting here tonight. Okay. Anything else? Yes, Patty, please.
I've been on the Airport Land Use Commission for 24 years, and we've seen a lot of requests come through. We look at developments around John Wayne Airport, which would be Santa Ana, Costa Mesa, Irvine, Tustin. There's like six airports, six cities. They look at activity around Buena Park, that airport up there, Voluchan Airport. They look at activity around a Joint Forces Training Base. And I can tell you that in all the years I've been on the Airport Land Use Commission, I have never seen such crazy places to put development as, because of the housing elements that all these cities that surround the airports. What they've been finding, you know, places to put housing is such a challenge. And we have seen terrible places where they're putting housing, you know, under John Wayne Airport.
I think that's a little beyond our scope here tonight. It's a little beyond our scope.
No, I know. But I'm saying, I'm just saying, it's, I saw that these past couple of years. Never seen that before, and it's all because of the demands of everybody's housing element.
Okay. Okay. So any other questions, please?
I have a number of questions. And I'm thankful for you, Chair, and as well as the fellow commissioners, because I think a lot of the broad, bigger questions have been asked and answered. I actually have probably a number of questions for Monica and David and maybe Sean, because as we start to contemplate implementing this, I think a lot of that comes down to what code standards are written, right? And having clarity on how those are actually interpreted. And having clarity on how those are actually interpreted and enacted. And so, just to preface this, I might feel a little bit like I'm diving way into the weeds, but I'm, I'm looking to understand that the nuance of where we've landed at particular standards reflects back to some of the higher level objectives and bigger picture, bigger picture objectives that, that have been talked about. So first thing first that I wanted to address was that I saw on the PowerPoint slide that you guys pulled together for us, says for the proposed MCRHD, I'm going to get that wrong, I apologize in advance, district that, and this is slide six that I'm looking at, but it says the zone does not allow 100% non-residential projects. At least 50% of the floor area must include residential. I did not see that reflected in Exhibit B, the Title 11. Am I overlooking that standard somewhere? And if so, maybe how does that come into play into the actual zoning itself?
I'm going to take a look for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then maybe I'll piggyback on top of that with a, an interpretation question based on that, which is the zone standards and the land use table that we do have provide for a number of, as with any zoning district, permitted, conditionally permitted, you know, minor use permit procedures for a variety of commercial uses. If we implement this zone, I presume we're going to create a number of legal non-conformities whereby if, for example, a tenant wants to go update within a tenant suite of a particular existing commercial center, and it's a permitted or conditionally permitted use, we're going to run into a standard where 50% has to be residential. Are we, have we considered how our non-conforming standards would address such a situation?
Go again, Patty, how, how, so you're saying that commercial use, I'm sorry, the commercial use wants to expand?
I'm saying if we have scenarios whereby we have existing commercial properties.
Right, right.
They are multi-tenant buildings.
Right.
Of which our, our proposed zoning for the MCRHD also allows through conditional permitted, permitted uses or other mechanisms, commercial properties. But if we have a requirement whereby projects must be 50% residential, what I don't see in our code is how we assume we're handling the legal non-conformity of rezoning commercial properties and creating instances where tenants may elect, a land use may be proposed in a building that's 100% commercial, and that by definition would not comply with the zoning standards that we've created. And so.
But that's within an existing building? Is that what, what you're saying?
But, but, so as I understand the, the legal non-conforming standards of the city, you can propose to alter or adjust a legal non-conforming use, but if you propose a new land use in a zoning district that requires minimum 50% residential, I'm wondering, I don't, I'm not wed to the fact that it can't happen. I'm just saying, as I read the resolution and code section that we're proposing, it does not anticipate this scenario. And I'm wondering if, and I guess maybe I'll turn to Sean or city attorney, I'm wondering if this is enough for the city to feel comfortable in how to interpret that? Because I'd hate to recommend adoption of a code that provides ambiguity for our staff in the future.
I would say that the question of non-conforming uses came up in our discussions with Alexa. And, and when we discussed it with her, she suggested that the city's existing non-conforming ordinance and procedures would come into play. So if you're describing a tenant improvement, for example, or continuation of the same use even though it's legally non-conforming.
I'm not, I'm not describing a tenant improvement. I'm describing, I'm describing a new commercial use that the MCRHC identifies as permitted or conditionally permitted, moving into an existing legal non-conforming commercial building. That would be a new land use that the, that our non-conforming standards do not anticipate. They anticipate alterations or adjustments to an existing commercial use.
Could you give an example of how you're talking, what, what are, give me an example of the existing non-conforming use versus the new use?
Okay, so maybe we should back up. Can we confirm in the created zone, there's a requirement for a minimum of 50% residential?
That's new.
That's, yeah.
That's new.
The concept of legally non-conforming is you get to keep what you have, I mean, this is high, what's the phrase you all have been using? Kind of high concept. You keep what you have, and as long as you don't intensify, expand, or prolong what is there, you get to keep doing it. That's conceptually, hold on, that's conceptually what legal non-conforming means. The city's zoning code has provisions to implement that and describes the circumstances when you can change things and when you can't if you are legally non-conforming. So if I have a certain kind of business in a unit, and I, and somebody comes in and wants to put in a different business, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to trigger the 50% requirement. It may very well be within the scope of what is quote legally non-conforming. You're, you're asking for an answer when we have nothing in front of us.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting, if the city is confident in that, I will, I, I can go with that. What I am highlighting, simply trying to raise awareness around, not trying to suggest that there's a problem if there need not be one. My understanding of legal non-conforming, it does not allow a change in land use.
That's the phrase you need to clarify. You can have a stationary store, you can have a restaurant, you can have different kinds of uses, and each municipal codes zoning code defines what it means to change uses, expand a use, et cetera.
So I don't want to complicate.
And I just also have a question for staff because Seal Beach, like every city, has different procedures for dealing with legal non-conforming uses. But our understanding is that a non-conforming use already on your existing can continue with a conditional use permit. So that would be sort of the mechanics of how you would handle it. And that's a question. I don't have the answer, but that was my understanding.
I'm going to try this. So if, if I have this unit with a commercial use, right, that's not conforming?
Mm-hmm.
And I put this, this other commercial use in there, are you saying you think that this says it has to be half-residential?
No, I'm asking the question.
Well, but is that, but is that the question, that it has to be half-residential?
I'm, I'm asking that question.
Right.
Yeah, so just to provide some clarity that I think we'll hopefully try to answer that question a little bit, is that through your legal non-conforming application review process, you're going to have to prove that there's going to be no net loss in your ability to provide residential housing units on that same site.
And if it's the same size, there's no net loss?
That's correct. And so if it's still feasible to produce 50% residential units based on the non-conforming use which is stacked on top of one another, per the chair's, you know, physical planning exercise, then it would, it would work, right? In the event that you propose a use which has specific like setback requirements or buffering, which then made the residential component non-feasible, then you would have to go through and identify where on your other housing sites or in throughout your city you would accommodate those units. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. It's not a process identified in this. So if city attorney is telling me that they're comfortable with that, I, I don't need to make a bigger issue of it than, than raising the question.
Let's try your next question.
Yeah, maybe I'll turn back to Monica. Is there, the 50% requirement, is that show up in our code somewhere?
Well, that's new use, right? That's a new building that has to be 50%.
Yeah, and I'm saying I didn't find that requirement.
Well, so there's a minimum density of 40 units an acre. So you can't go in and propose, yep.
Were this sentence to say, zone does not allow new non-residential projects of at least, i.e. at least 50% of floor area, that any new construction must accommodate at least 50% of the floor area residential?
That's right.
So new is the key word here.
That's right.
So if that said new, then it would be clearer.
When it comes to existing development, that's hashed out in your non-conforming part of the code.
But I mean, you have a shopping center with existing buildings, but the new building, the new construction.
Right, right. Any new development, absolutely.
So that's the ticket.
Yeah. No, that makes sense to me. I'm, I'm wondering where this, at least 50% of the floor area came from. I'm understanding you're saying every project is required to provide a minimum 40 dwelling units per acre. And so when you crunch the size of a parcel, you crunch the allowable building height, you crunch all those things, we're arriving not at a standard, but at an assumption of the mixture of residential.
Key for the rest.
Is that what I'm, I'm understanding?
Well, Monica looks that up. I just want to give the commissioner an understanding of where this concept comes from and HCD's demands. And it wasn't just in Seal Beach. We, LWC composed 16 housing elements for cities all across the state. And, and over the six cycle, the standards changed from HCD. And I'm sure Stan Tech, you have composed housing elements for cities around the state. And it's a negotiating process. And one of the things that came out sort of early on, certainly by the time we reached the SCAG communities, so in all the Southern California counties, HCD was concerned that there were provisions that people were saying, well, we'll rezone our commercial areas to mixed use. And HCD began pushing back against that and saying, we want guarantees that you will not do 100% non-residential in your mixed use zones. So it's really an artifact of HCD's mandate that cities not permit any new applications in their mixed use zones to be 100% non-residential.
This makes sense. What I'm asking is, we're being asked with that knowledge in mind to adopt a zoning code or to offer a recommendation on it. And what I'm saying is I'm struggling to find in the revised text where we wrote that into it.
It may just be in the housing element, and the housing element is filled with programs that need to be followed up with, this isn't the last time you're going to be seeing a housing element implementation change to the zoning code. There are.
We're going to get more zoning code changes?
They're small and technical, but you're going to see them. So for example, and Sean, you can let me know if you've already done some of them, but like low barrier navigation, have you brought your code in line in that particular area?
For that one, no.
Yeah. So that's going to come up, and it'll need to come up this year. So if you look in the housing element programs, and we actually have been talking with Sean a little bit about this, and we can talk about this offline, and there's a little bit left in our budget so we can start preparing some of those for you. But the programs require, this isn't the only zoning change that you're going to be, that's going to become up to you over the next year, year and a half. Most of them are technical in nature, like where you allow concrete care facilities, you know, and the size of them. And it's all just, it's not even discretionary. You have to do it to become incongruent with state law. You know, it's one of these things, it's like you could choose to violate state law and you'll get a letter from the Attorney General's office. Norwalk is going through this right now, right? You don't want to go through this.
That makes sense. I think.
Yeah. So no, I understand your concern, but understand that some of these things are program language rather than the specific rezoning request.
And as all I'm saying is, we have an opportunity here where we're adding text, we're revising text, we're denoting commercial uses as permitted. If in fact, the reality is that we don't want to permit 100% of these uses, I'm just asking, have we been intentional in how we've organized this table? Because to me, it does not seem to reflect some of the program assumptions that we're speaking to. And so that, that's the nature of this question. It's not at all a matter of like, the enormity of a code update like this is not lost on me. It's simply, I, I think I'm looking at it and I'm saying, hey, we've spoken to certain assumptions, and now I'm looking at a table that doesn't reflect those. And so if staff and the consultant team are telling me with confidence like, hey, this gets us in the direction where we're going, I'll lean on some of that. But otherwise, I think, I guess I find myself curious, right? Why some of that, why, why we're not footnoting the permitted land uses and stipulating, you know, consistent with our general plan, housing element? Yeah.
Do you have particular tables that you focused on as you went through with your planner hat on?
I'm, I'm speaking to like the general land use table, right? That speaks to a variety of land uses as permitted by right. But then I'm hearing that we, we can't rebuild all these sites with just permitted land uses. It's got to be a mixture of residential. So I'm just, I'm wondering how staff is organizing that information? And if it's a function of simply like, you know, our zoning code not being there yet, and there's updates in the pipeline, I guess I can pin some of these comments and, and as a, as a separate comment at the end of it, ask staff for a status on, you know, what's in the, what's further out on the pipeline.
Yeah, well, I'd, I'd like to, I really appreciate these comments because perhaps we do need to make some clarification within the code language. The intent was for new development. And so, yeah, and that, and that may not be clear in the language of the tables in the code. And we definitely, if you're commissioned, if, I would appreciate if that were part of the recommendation to make sure you go through the code so that the focus of the new resident, of the residential component is for new development. Because in all reality, even though there's a lot of discussion of what may be built there, what may not be built there, in all reality, for quite some time, there's probably not going to be any new development. And if there is, it might be a little small piece and, and some part. And what we don't want to do is get in a situation where we have businesses, we regularly have businesses, you know, shops or Rossmore that switch out as retail and wants to be a restaurant. And we don't want to stop that. We want to encourage business activity within those centers. And so I appreciate that comment, and I think that we need to go through and clarify that that is a standard for new development.
Because.
I think, maybe I appreciate that refocus. It's helpful. I have a number of other, again, I'll, I'll say I'm in the weeds here, so I'm not sure it's, it's productive in terms of the, kind of where we're at and the, and the level of different things, but.
Is there some, is there some language? Because you've thought this all through, and that's a whole bunch of work. Is there, well, no, but I'm serious. I mean, we don't want to lose that whole bunch of work.
Is conceptually what you're looking for, some, somewhere in either in the section on uses, commercial and residential, clear statements that say in the new zone, only 50% can be X?
I, I think that would achieve it.
And that would achieve what your point is?
Yes, correct.
And it, and then has to speak to the new?
Right, right.
New construction.
Yeah, I think that would achieve it.
Okay.
I do have, and again, I, I feel like I'm, I'm diving really into the nuance of this, but one of the other things that jumps out to me as we craft these code sections, one of the things that came up a year ago when we talked about, you know, creating this zone and some of the objective design standards that we have, is building articulation and giving some life to some of these buildings. And so one of the standards that I would like to turn to, and again, it feels down in the weeds, but I think it is important as we think about how a building actually comes to life and the standards that we have, we have allowable protrusions into a setback. We have allowable protrusions into a setback area. The minimum setback is three feet. And then we say, projections can go into a setback provided they're not closer than three feet from the property line. To me, that is effectively not allowing for protrusions. And so, and I can call out the particular.
Which setback is three feet?
I think it's the side yard setback in the MCRHD zoning district.
Three feet minimum, 15 foot maximum?
We can't hear.
It's three.
Three to 15 feet, yeah. And then, yeah.
And then we have allowable projections into the setback. And that's qualified to say that architectural features, I'm on page 27 of 43 of Exhibit B.
Okay.
And it says, architectural features such as bay windows, eight feet or less in length, cornices, bees, canopies, and chimneys may not extend closer than three feet into the interior side or rear property line.
Sorry, you're on 27 of 64?
I'm on, sorry, I'm on 27 of 43 in the exhibit packet. It's, I'll get you the section heading here. And I appreciate, I know this is like way, way, way in the weeds, but like I said, it's important, it is important to me though, in terms of how we implement some of this, and how these buildings do kind of come to life for us. I'm struggling to find the draft section.
So it's O, so that was a section that applies not just to the MCRHD, but to all of the zones above, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you're concerned that it says architectural features, okay, in the MCRHD, okay, may not extend closer than three feet to any interior side or rear lot line. Okay, so you're suggesting that a better standard would be some?
No, I think the clarification that applies to a variety of districts is helpful. As it relates to the MCRHD that has a minimum three-foot setback, my recollection of a lot of the public input that we gathered, a lot of council comments, and a lot of this commission's comments from a year ago, was that the building's articulation, specific design features, right? Mimicking some of the character of the lower density that we have throughout the city, right? Adding some of those architectural features is a priority within this new zone. And what I'm reading here is a standard that doesn't effectively allow for that, because we've said you can allow projections, but then we've said they can't be closer than the minimum setback area anyways. So we've effectively not allowing for them to protrude into the setback area, so.
So are you looking for like a zero setback or a one foot or?
I think at this point, I would be comfortable offering an option. I think for me, it's more the intentionality behind it of if we were intentional in crafting that, because, and this section's born out of a desire to see some of that stuff, if my recollection of community desires, council desires, commission desires are accurate, right? I would welcome insights as to why we've limited that, and if it's unintentional, then I'd be prepared to offer a recommendation to adjust that.
To what?
To, I don't know, to one foot, provided that it meets all building code provisions?
Or maybe no, or zero for that. If we had a, if we had, for instance, within a shopping center, and the new construction was going to be at the street front, then we might want a zero setback for that portion as an option, not a requirement, but as an option.
That's terrible.
Now, it depends on how it's designed. If you have, if you have a big shopping center, and you have some on the street front, and you want to enliven that street front, if we have people walking up and down, then it might be a good thing for a portion.
I see what you're saying.
See what I'm saying? No, we don't.
Okay, I'm looking at the shops.
Right, but I'm saying just a portion.
Where they're back, and there's a plant.
Right, but just a portion.
Okay.
You know, you might want a front door there, right? So is that, yes, you see what we're, and it's as an option, it's not a requirement, that we're looking at the, on the street front to?
I think that was on the side and rear.
Oh, side and rear.
I think we're just talking about interior side.
Okay.
All right, so we want to look at.
Because your ground floor is going to be commercial, so that's what we're talking about, right?
We're talking about any project within the MCRHD district, which will most likely be residential as it relates to allowable architectural features that are.
Maybe we'll be commercial on the ground floor.
Yeah.
Like on Main Street.
Yes, yes, exactly. Okay, that's a proposal, what else?
And then the last recommendation I would have is just within the building height, commercial and mixed use districts, Table 11 dot 2 dot 10 dot 015B.
Did she get that? That was quite a string of numbers there.
Table 11 dot 2 dot 10 dot 015B. We've denoted five-story maximum. I believe the presentation we've offered and the materials we were provided shows six-foot or a sixth floor option, provided that it's setback.
That's true, yeah. We intentionally, yeah, we do want the base maximum height to be five stories, and that's it, nothing beyond that.
Where?
In the MCRHD, outside of the coastal zone. But we also want to anticipate potential density bonus projects that would waive that, yeah. So should a project come in at six stories or anything more than five? It was important to the community, what we heard, this is a couple of years ago, that those upper stories, starting at floor, yeah, floor four, be setback significantly. It's not suggesting that the base maximum height is more than five stories.
It's simply building in a provision that if, through density bonus or other mechanisms.
That's right.
Wow, that's a great clarification. I appreciate that, yeah.
Calvin, where in the city would you put a six-story building? Can't put it on Main Street.
I'm not proposing, nor am I wearing a developer hat. I'm wearing a regulatory hat of the standards that we have.
He's trying to make it be consistent.
Well, that's the problem. We've got five districts, and they're all different.
Monica, I appreciate that clarification.
One thing fits all.
So with that, I think I'll conclude. I think I had, what, two recommendations that came out of that?
You had that one, the first one, or the middle one, though, I don't remember. But we did, no, that's good, that inherent consistency. And, and I think we certainly want to make the comment that yes, that there will be fine tuning on the zoning as we go forward, that will follow after the adoption of the element.
How many stories is the?
So, anything else from up here?
How many stories is the Boeing?
City attorney, that we need to?
Eight.
Anything else we need to talk to the consultants about? Otherwise, I will close the public hearing. We're good? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We'll bring it up to the commission at this time, so we do have some amendments that were proposed by the commissioner that would be part of the motion to, let's take a look, where's our motion paper? It's been such a long time. Here we go. So we will be looking for a recommendation with regard to adopting a resolution recommending the council certify the final EIR and adopt findings of fact and a statement of overriding considerations, adopt mitigation monitoring and reporting program under the SEQA Act for the 2021 through 29 six-cycle housing element update, and Resolution Number 2509 of the Planning Commission recommending that the council adopt the 2021-29 housing element update, adopt amendments to the zoning code, of which there were some amendments, the zoning map and Main Street specific plan to implement the 2021-29 six-cycle housing element to fulfill housing state law. Do we have a motion?
I suggest you do each resolution separately.
Oh, you want to do them separately? Okeydoke, we can do that. So let me divvy this up. So the first one would be 2508, recommending certification of the final EIR and adopting findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations and adopt mitigation monitoring and reporting program under the SEQA Act for the housing element. That would be the first one. Do we have a motion on that?
I motion.
Okay, and second? I'll second. May we have any comments? May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Rinalta, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Wheeler, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Maggiani, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
No.
Motion passes three votes to one.
And then we have Resolution 2509, recommending that the city council adopt the 21-29 housing element update, adopt amendments to the zoning code, zoning map, zoning code with amendments presented this evening, zoning map and Main Street specific plan to implement the 21-29 six-cycle housing element to fulfill state housing law. Do we have a motion on that resolution?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comment? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Chair Maggiani, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinalta, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
No.
And Chair Wheeler, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion passes three votes to one.
Thank you. City attorney?
And these are recommendations, so it's, they're not final actions, so there's no appeal. These will go directly to the city council.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and thank you to the consultants, and thank you to the commission for your attention and comments on this large project. Director's report, do we have a director's report?
Yes, we tentatively have this item scheduled for October 27th with the city council, for anyone who's interested. Again, we're maintaining a website, the Housing Element Update, on the city's webpage. Additionally, I'm available throughout the entire process for any member of the public who has any questions before the council member, or before the council meeting, I will be available. Thank you.
Thank you. Any commission concerns?
Nope.
I want to thank the commission for putting up with my disappearance last time, and for our friend here to take care of things. I was in a minor fender bender, and I forgot. And I was horrified to realize it's the first planning commission in 40 years I ever missed, swear.
We missed it.
I never missed, never missed a planning commission previously. Just crushing. Okay, anything else? Not, then we will adjourn tonight's planning commission meeting to the meeting on Monday, October 20th at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.